Good morning. I just would like to check, Mike Richman, you're there. Hello, good morning Jenna.
I'm here.
I'm there and I see Director Elliott, good morning Mayor Elliott. So, Staff hello.
Would you like to take our virtual attendees? Thank you.
And we have a guest, I'd like to introduce, would you like to, can people see?
Yes, one moment please.
When you start speaking, the camera will. Hello, I'm Elizabeth Tracy, the CEO of the Village of Pemberton. So with some excess noise outside, welcome Elizabeth, the new CEO of Pemberton.
We'll call the meeting.
We'll call the meeting to order. Chair Ford is on her way, called to order at 9:08 by my. Watch. And a request to approve the agenda, we could get started with that.
Do you want to move the first nations recognition?
Ah, yes, and first of all, what I should do is recognize collectively, we're all in the unceded territories of all the First Nations within our regional boundaries. We're very glad to be here. And I see Chair Ford arriving as well as Director Compton, so that's good.
Would you like to recess for a moment?
Let's recess for a moment and change chairs. I just managed to bang the gavel.
All good, all this, here we are. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for indulging my tardiness. And so we will approve the agenda. You had it moved, moved by Director Rich Jones.
Can you just make sure Director Elliott and Director Rich move on?
Director Elliott is here and Director Richman, are you? Just flash your hand, maybe not.
Yeah, I'm here.
You are, perfect, thank you. Moved by Director Rich Jones, seconded by Director Compton, is there anyone opposed? Motion carries. Because we don't have Area C's alternate and we know that Director Mack is not available today, we'll move along to the closed.
I think we're going to go to the.
Oh, we're gonna do the.
We're about four minutes early.
Okay, do we have CEO Colin joining us virtually?
That's correct, that's my understanding, yeah, I don't see.
Not here yet?
Not here, no, there's a few folks here, I'll just call their names.
Anything else we can check on?
So see, I believe, um, Tricia, Andrew and Tia are on our original list. We do have an additional person there who may be a substitute.
Who's that?
Uh, Laura Musser.
No, she's part of the, and we're, I mean, we don't need Ginny necessarily, we can do it with that group of people and myself.
Okay, but Laura is included in now.
She definitely is, yeah. Musser Savage?
Uh, no, Laura, Laura, it's just Laura Musser right now.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, I can let them in now if you want.
Okay, let's do that. Excellent, it's great to see you all here today. If you could just introduce yourself as it comes, or should we do a round of introductions? With everyone that's joining us for the delegation?
Sure, why don't we introduce ourselves first and then Ginny might show up before they get to introduce themselves?
We, the board?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, so we will do a quick introduction, can everyone hear us appropriately? Great. Um, okay, my name is Jen Ford, I am a councillor in Whistler and I'm the Chair of the SLRD. And I will turn to Director Rainbow, we'll go around the room here and then we'll go around the screen for everyone on screen.
Okay, I'm Tony Rainbow, I'm the Director, Area D Director for the SLRD.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone, nice to see you again, Jack Compton from Whistler. I think I see you every day, but I see you today.
Other folks like to introduce themselves too? Vivian Birch Jones, the Area B Director, Area B surrounds a little bit.
Good morning.
Thank you, and we'll go to CEO Dalton and then Director Clark.
Good morning, Craig Dalton, Chief Administrative Officer of the Squamish Regional District.
Thank you, good morning, I'm Kristen Clark, the Corporate Officer at the SLRD.
Great, and.
Thank you, Elizabeth Tracy, CEO of the Village of Pemberton.
You can join us at the table if you'd like.
Should I tell that fire need to pipe down?
Well, tell just stand up.
Testing equipment, which is quite important.
Yes, yeah, that's how it goes to work. We'll go to the screen, I'll go just across my screen here, so Director DeMare, if you could introduce yourself, please.
Sal DeMare, Area A Director in the Upper Bridger Valley.
Great, thank you, and Director Stoner?
Hi there, Jenna Stoner, Director with the SLRD and also a councillor in the District of Spah.
Thank you, Director Elliott?
Good morning, everyone, Karen Elliott, Director with the SLRD and Mayor of Squamish.
Excellent, and I'll go to Lara, please.
I'm just making sure that was me you're talking to?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Hey Swell, good morning, my name is Laura Musser. I'm coming to you today from Squaw First Nation here in the valley where I'm Chief of my community. I'm a member of the feasibility team supporting community engagement. Nice to see you all, good morning.
Excellent, thank you, and Andrew Baker?
Hi, everyone, great to be here today, my name is Andrew Baker, I'm Vice President of International Relations and Public Affairs with Canadian Olympic Committee and overseeing our feasibility efforts and coming to you today from traditional territories of the Kanagahaga Nation here in Montreal, but we'll be back on the West Coast next week.
Great, thank you, Tia?
Good morning, everyone, my name's Tia Lor, I'm coming to you from Richmond, the Katzie, Quantlin, Towasun and Musqueam peoples. And I am the Project Coordinator for this super exciting project, thanks for having us.
Thank you, Tuani?
Hot Squaw, everyone, I hope you're having a great day. My name is Sutokin Tuani Joseph, I'm part of the feasibility team in the area of Indigenous Inclusion and Partnerships and I'm coming to you from the Stanaymuk Nation on Vancouver Island, Pochka.
Thank you, Tricia?
Hi, everyone, I'm Tricia Smith, I'm the Volunteer Chair of the Canadian Olympic Committee, so the President of the Canadian Olympic Committee. I'm calling in from Lausanne, Switzerland, where I've been in meetings, including with the International Olympic Committee President on Tuesday. Normally, I live in Vancouver, I'm fortunate to live on the unceded territories of the Musqueam, Squamish and Tsleil-Waututh Nations.
Excellent, thank you, and Violet?
Morning, everybody, my name is Violet Shorty, I'm calling from Vancouver, Tsleil-Waututh Nation, Squamish Nation and Musqueam Traditional Territory. I am the Community Engagement Coordinator for this project, thank you.
Great, thank you, and Director Richman?
Thanks Jen, Mike Richman, Mayor Pemberton and Director on the Board, good morning, everyone.
Excellent, thank you. We have two more people joining us. CEO Colin, could you introduce yourself? We've just done a round of the room and the virtual room.
Okay, good morning, everybody, sorry, I'm a couple of minutes late, my name's Ginny Cullen, I'm the CEO at the RMOW, it's nice to be here.
Great to have you here, thank you, and Ms Marks, if you could introduce yourself, we've just done a round of introductions.
Thank you, good morning, everyone, Christine Marks, supporting the RMOW in this project, nice to see you all.
Okay, I am going to turn the floor over to Director Compton to lead us through the beginning of this presentation, go ahead Director Compton.
Okay, I just want to say thank you for everyone's interest and for taking time today to meet with this group of people who are putting in huge amounts of work to move forward the opportunity for a 2030 Olympics. And I just want to start by saying, for me, there, I had heard about a 2030 Games for a long time. But it became extremely compelling and real when the vision for an Indigenous-led bid became something that was being talked about and presented and Chief Wayne Sparrow of the Musqueam talks about how the Squamish Nation were the ones who kind of dreamt this up and presented it to all of us. And so, there's been a lot of work done lately to understand the feasibility of the Games and we're now in the Games Engagement phase. And so, we thought that it would be really important for this group of people to be able to spend some time hearing about what is being considered, asking questions and providing some feedback. So with that, am I turning it over to CEO Colin or to Tricia, who takes the ball from here?
I think it can go straight to Tricia.
All right, great, I'll turn it over to the President of the COC, Tricia Smith.
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks, everyone. I just thought I'd give you a little bit of background because I, and for some of you, you would have heard this before. But just to give you some background on how we got here today, and thanks again for just taking the time to to be here, first of all, to talk about what we believe is an extremely exciting project for all of us. And as Mayor said, we're really looking for your feedback, we're very much in the engagement phase of this project and we truly believe this Indigenous-led bid is, is, is something that has the power, like 2010, but in a different way to change our province and, and our country and really to possibly even change the world, so a little background. So the process in the, in the old days for selecting hosts for Games internationally, you'll recall perhaps that before 2010, seven years before that, in Prague in 2003, that was the decision the IOC made in selecting Vancouver, but even before that, we had an internal process in, within Canada, so Vancouver had to compete with Calgary and Quebec to be the international bid to go and be the Canadian candidate. And competed against Korea and Austria to finally be selected, so that was a really inefficient process. We weren't involved so much in that, but we certainly know that $36 million had to be raised just for the bid itself. So before the Games were even awarded, so the IOC recognized that that was an inefficient way and often those that didn't, weren't successful, never came back to bid again, so the new process that we're in, and you'll hear more about it, just with some background, is basically the IOC says if you're interested, let us know, we'll work with you, you don't have to say right away which Games and so on, so that's part of the story. The other part of the story is that the Canadian Olympic Committee, and we're working always hand in hand with the Canadian Paralympic Committee. We're not-for-profit, we're a non-government funded organization, we basically send teams to Games and we promote Olympism. And we believe that hosting Games in our country is important to give our athletes a chance to compete at home, to build legacies for the sports system, to inspire Canadians. All of those, the next generation, I mean, I, I'll never forget being at a Cross Country Ski World Cup in Kenmore and standing there with Becky Scott and a bunch of her cross-country ski kids. And they were watching the top skiers from around the world skiing on their course in Kenmore and going up the same hills that they go up every day, so navigating the same corners and the downhills and you could almost see the dreams floating around in their heads about what's possible when they see that, it makes it seem possible, so. Yet, the COC along with CPC, we've done a review over the last few years regarding a bid, a summer or winter, if a summer, where, if a winter, where, and we really concluded that the best fit for legacy for the sports system, the best chance at winning internationally, was a BC bid building on the Games of 2010. I mean, we're fortunate to have had 2010, it didn't work for everyone, it worked for a lot of people, so how could we improve on those Games? So looking at reusing the venues is the main, one of the main initiatives that you'll hear about later. But in order to, since 2010, a lot has changed, as you well, as you well know, I mean, certainly there was some groundbreaking work done with the Forest First Nations in 2010, but a lot has happened since then, the Truth and Reconciliation Report. The Province's Commitment to Drip of the Declaration of Rights of Indigenous People, the United Nations Declaration of the Rights of Indigenous People being recognized by the federal government. And the tragic findings of the graves at the residential schools, and there's so much more. In the, in the Truth and Reconciliation Report, there are calls to action around sport because the Truth and Reconciliation authors recognized the power of sport to bring people together and the Canadian Olympic Committee is committed to those calls to action and it's about respecting protocol, respecting lands and engagement at all stages of Indigenous communities. So when we started to look at a 2030 bid, we talked to Tuani Joseph, who was the CEO of the Forest First Nations 2010 and said, "Tuani, we're committed to this, what, what's our first step?" He said, "You have to ask permission." And so we did, we asked the four nations for permission to start to do some feasibility work about a possible 2030 bid. And they gave us the permission and they also told us, as you heard, that Chief Sparrow and others had been looking at possibly a bid for 2030, and so we said, "That's terrific, can we be part of that?" And they generously invited us into the process. And that's, that's how, how we got to where we are and we've been working together since that time, bringing all of our skills to the table. It's all about working together respectfully and lifting each other up and so that's really where we got to, where we are, to how we got to where we are today, as, as you'll hear what we've been doing since we started this work and as, as Mayor said, we're now in the Games Engagement phase, so I'm looking forward to, to hearing your feedback on what you hear today and thank you very much again for your time. Pass it on now to Tuani.
Tuani, I'm you.
Pochka, thank you, technology too, so, but I just wanted to, to thank you, Mayor Compton, thank you, Chairperson, actually wanted to hold my hands up to all of you for having us here today. I'm glad Tricia talked a little bit about the 2010 Olympic and Paralympic Winter Games and in my role as the CEO, I certainly was able to bear witness to the relationships that we had with the Resort Municipality Whistler, many partners in the Games, but also the largest Indigenous gathering from First Nations, Inuit and Métis from every province and territory as well as national organizations. And so, what we're able to see is really the greatest accelerative relationships and that's one of the takeaways that, that I learned from, from the 2010 Olympic and Paralympic Winter Games. But also at the time, what was important is also culture. And so, you know, we have a lot of lessons and teachings that we've learned, but in our longhouse, if, if many of you, or if you haven't had a chance to come into our longhouses, we're longhouse people, the Three Nations, Musqueam, Squamish and Tsleil-Waututh, but also the Litwak people lived in Ishkans, but the importance of our home and our place was really about different times when we had ceremonies and from naming ceremonies to weddings to other things. We would invite people to come into our community and invite them to come in to bear witness to the ceremonies that we would have and the important teachings that were being shared. And during that time also, when people come into our longhouse here on the coast, they're asked to bear witness and it's that power of that invitation by the family to those people that come from different places to be able to keep our culture alive. And those words that get shared in our longhouse are important because those are the teachings that, the oral traditions that get passed on from generation to generation, but also those that witness are asked to go back to their homes as a responsibility and share the teachings also and pass on that knowledge to the next generation, to their family and friends. And really, the, the important part about this journey that we've embarked upon at the leadership of the Forest First Nations, want to hold my hands up to to the Resort Municipality Whistler and City of Vancouver for what we say in our culture, Chin Chin Swai, holding the nations up. And I think that's important, but also at the same time now, it's the teachings from all of our places to, to come forward in, in our culture when we talk about Indigenous-led process, it's really about having that equal voice at the table, being able to share, being able to identify challenges and opportunities together. So that as we start to move forward, when we talk about a model and global model of inclusivity, in 2010, people watched what happened around the world here in this part of the world and to have taken some of those teachings, but also at the same time, I think that 2030 provides a very unique opportunity and I think it would be truly history in the making to take the cultures of the nations, but also all of what we're working on within our communities to make a better place and that's also part of our teachings, make our place a little bit better than how we're living today. And so the spirit for which we've moved forward is really the coming together and collaboration and the power of the invitation. The other thing is we've had hundreds of meetings together as different groups that have sat in the same room, identified the challenges, identified opportunities, but what's come together again and through our teachings is to have one heart and one mind. And I think that's also important and when we talk about kind of culture, but also sharing, but also respecting other cultures from all people, from all places and their views, and I think what we found is that we have a lot in common too. We have a lot of things we want to better in our communities as well, the same way, but it's going to take all of us to do that, it's that coming together that's important. We focused in on a few areas around protocol, which Tricia mentioned before, and seeking permission from the nations, but also at the same time, the nations have graciously responded and said, you know, "It's going to take all of us to do this," and so that work began in September and then we started to move through a process, when you talk about Drip, the Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People here in British Columbia, as well as TRC recommendations and Undrip. You know, part of that was permission, but also consent of the Forest First Nations working within their territory, so following that and then also moving to this co-leadership of model and that free and fire, informed prior consent is certainly one of the underpinnings that this is, we start to go forward. And then you look at the collaboration part, this collaboration and communication that's been happening together with all of the groups. And so I think that's been another part of this process that we've been starting to move forward, then of course, it's a tight timeline. But also, we've, we've drawn upon experiences from the past, but also those that we're working on today. And I think that's another important piece for us as we start to move forward, is your voices are important. This engagement phase in our culture is also important from our elders to our youth, to others that work within our communities that want to make that better place, it's your voice now that's really important as we start to shape this vision out even further and hearing from all people in these areas, so just wanted to share that from some of the experiences from 2010, but how it's been going, working together, we're learning so much together, we're sharing teachings together. But also now it's this time to hear from you, so thank you, and we'll pass it over to Andrew.
Thanks, Tuani, I'm, I'm wondering if we're able to bring the slides back up, I don't, was that a tech issue or, or just because we were just talking to the title?
Through the chair, I'm here to provide technical assistance for the SLRD, I will put this back up right now and if you're able to let me know when to advance the slides and.
Perfect, will do, so if you could move forward to the timeline slide, I think it's slide number five or six. Next slide, perfect, so, thanks, thanks, Tuani, thanks, Tricia, and thanks again for having us here. I wanted to start by talking a little bit about where we are in this process relative to both the domestic and international timeline and both Mayor Compton and Tricia have talked about the invitation from the nations to the, the partners to collaborate and to work together on this project. And that really formed the basis of the feasibility phase, which has been ongoing throughout and from a COC and Canadian Paralympic Committee perspective, we've been ultimately supporting the partners in this feasibility assessment and then looking at developing an initial hosting concept, which we'll share further details on today and was unveiled several weeks ago. And what that did is it set us up to launch into this engagement phase, to start having a broader set of conversations. At the invite of the nations, we started that work with the Leadership Assembly Partners, we started to engage within the nations as a starting point and now the the circle is expanding and Laura will talk about that today. But as we look at the June to November phase, that really is around further discussion on the initial hosting concept, a further refinement of what that concept can look like, what could these Games mean for communities across the region? And putting shape to, to the hosting proposals. And in addition, at the public unveiling, there was an invite to the province and the federal government to join the conversations in a, in a meaningful way and we'll look to have those conversations with other levels of government at the same time, so lots of conversations and lots of work to continue over the course of the coming months as we put shape to, to what this could look like. Internationally, what we're working towards, you heard Tricia talk about the difference in, in the international election model. They, the IOC has, has confirmed that they believe they'll be in a position to award the Games at the IOC session that starts on May 30th of next year. And to do so, they believe that in this new model, they would be inviting interested candidates or, and candidates that are, have advanced a concept to a certain degree into a targeted dialogue with the IOC, which is listed here on the slide as the bidding phase. And so ultimately, the IOC would open a targeted dialogue for 20, the 2030 Games and then would invite interested parties in if they were in a position where they're, they're, all of the partners wished to proceed. So domestically, that's really the timeline that we're working with in terms of identifying, do partners wish to further these conversations, to do this engagement, to hear from the public, to hear from surrounding areas and then to make decisions as to whether or not they wish to continue to pursue a 2030 Game specifically and pursue invitation into targeted dialogue in December. If we are invited into targeted dialogue, at that point is when we would have the more targeted negotiations with the IOC relative to the specifics of hosting a 2030 Games. And so, that is, that is the, the international process and how it is, it is set up relative to our domestic process. If we go to the next slide, we've talked a little bit about how much this has changed and I won't rehash too much, but at the local level, the bidding model is completely different, we are here at the, the invitation of, of the nations, supporting the, the four host nations, and it's the first time from a Canadian Olympic Committee perspective that we've privately funded and invested in, in the exploration of a potential bid. And so it's really changed the, the bidding model, the structure of, of how bids are perceived and as Tricia talked about, significantly reduced the cost of, of how bids are required to, to move forward, the funding for bids to be required to move forward. Nationally, there is a Canadian sport hosting policy that was published in 2008 that identifies the federal government's position on hosting, their parameters, their desire, and sets a, a target to host two events every 10 years, two major international events every 10 years. It also has led to the development of a major sport events framework that provides really a basis for different levels of government and partners to come together to talk about the opportunity prior to even bidding for the Games and so that's work that's been leveraged in our discussions so far and will continue to be leveraged into the future. And then the IOC has a new strategic framework, we talked about the different bidding model. That's significantly changed the way that bids perceive and, and proceed. But it's also changed the way that Games are delivered, it's, it's really focused on sustainability at all levels of the project and ensuring that the Games adapt to host communities and not the other way around. And so the IOC is very focused on ensuring that the Games are sustainable, that they help support the development needs and the desires and investment desires of local region, of the region that's hosting. And the, from our assessment of, of this, the situation of the strategic plan, both domestically and internationally, we believe there's a great opportunity to fit in within the variety of frameworks, both locally, nationally and internationally with the potential for a 2030 Games. If we go to the next slide, we'll talk just a little bit about that initial hosting concept and this really pulls together the conversations that have been had amongst the partners to date and provides a bit of a framework for what these could look like. It provides the basis for us to engage further with communities across the region and gives an idea of the vision and the opportunity for what this could mean and this was again, it was produced by the feasibility team, but really on the basis of hundreds of discussions, as Tuani mentioned, with partners and then under the leadership of the the Leadership Assembly that was brought together by the Forest First Nations. If we go to the next slide, we'll talk just really quickly about the Venue Master Plan and this was one of the foundations of the work that was happening, was the assessment of what could this master plan look like, that's where are the sport venues located and where are the venues around the region, the non-sport venues to be located and that talks about venue master plan that meets the technical requirements internationally to host sporting events. An athletes' village concept for Olympic and Paralympic villages that aligns to the long-term needs of the, the regions. And then sufficient accommodation is, in terms of hosting game stakeholders. So when we look at the next slide, ultimately, the master plan principles that we were working for as we, we assessed various venues across the province were really to be fiscally and environmentally responsible to build on the legacy of 2030. To build on the legacy of twenty ten. Um, to focus public investment on community priorities and extending the life of venues that are serving communities right now. Um, to align to host communities priorities and, and in a way that can be feasibly delivered at games time. So we had to balance the needed to be. Uh, we had to consider the games time delivery um and how that would be delivered. Um, but and to deliver a quality field, a plan, a positive games experience for athlete spectators and, and all those are in and around the games. And to really build a concept that satisfied partners and met the technical requirements. So one that would be accepted by the funding partners and their respective priorities and frameworks. And one that leaves legacies locally, um that drives positive public support of in, within local communities where people can see the benefits that would accrue. Um, to B C, to Canada, to locals and, and ultimately would also meet. Um, uh, the international requirement and would be feasible to be um selected by the IOC if, if we decide to proceed into an international bid. So uh if we go to the next slide, this is um ultimately the map that was unveiled several weeks ago. Um, this is, you'll see, you'll notice. Some, uh, a few differences in this. Ultimately, um, one of the big differences is that this reflects three different clusters of venues. Um, we have the, the venue cluster in Whistler, a venue plus the cluster in Vancouver in the lower mainland, and then a new addition of Sun Peaks on the Olympic. Um, on the Olympic program for freestyle skiing and snowboard events. Um, so Whistler, it's really building on the legacy of twenty ten, um where we will see Alpine skiing being hosted. Um, in two courses, um in, in twenty ten, it was one course, this would be two course, uh Whistler Creek Slide and Whistler Targamigan. Um, we would leverage uh the Sliding Center and the Whistler Olympic Park, um as well as uh an athlete village in, in the Whistler area. Um, and then when we move down into uh Vancouver in the lower mainland, um one of the new features here um is, is Hastings Park. Um, which in twenty ten hosted uh figure skating and short track speed skating. Um, in this model is contemplated also to host curling. Uh, which was in twenty ten hosted at the Hillcrest Community Center, which has been. Uh, converted permanently into a community center and can't be reconverted, but gives us the opportunity to, to move to Hastings Park in the Agri Dome. Um, and create, start to create a little bit of an Olympic and Paralympic park feel. Um, we will also install a big air uh ramp on the, the, the race course at Hastings Park, include a metal, Metals Plaza. Um, at Hastings Park and a Olympic and Paralympic store, which will allow us to create a cluster down in Vancouver area. In addition, we would be looking to reuse the Olympic Oval that is currently contemplated, UBC Thunderbird Arena uh is currently contemplated. Uh, as hockey two and for Paralympic ice hockey. And then we would be looking at uh B C Place for opening, closing ceremony. Uh, or for the Olympics, opening ceremony for Paralympics and the closing would happen in Hastings Park. Um, and so, and, and then Sun Peaks, again, as I mentioned, would be hosting the freestyle skiing and snowboarding events. Um, which adds a new cluster goes outside the region and addresses some of the challenges we saw um at Cypress with relation to snow. There's also been an expansion of the number of events and the number of course requirements, which would make it more difficult to deliver in, in Cypress as well. Um, if we go to the next slide. We'll see, um, there are, this is, we won't go through this all um in detail. We have made and looked at. Um, some of the capacities of various venues to ensure that they were manageable within the capacity of the regions. And uh within trans, just looking at easing sometimes transportation requirements, making sure that they fit the scale and the scope. And so this, these are numbers that, that could adjust, but we are thinking. How can we ensure that where we're hosting venues, where we're moving people, that we do so in the most responsible way and with. The least amount of impact on surrounding community. And so there were some decision in, in some cases to reduce venue capacities. To avoid overloading roads and highways and to address some of the challenges that we may have saw in twenty ten. And I would say. This is what we view as an incredible opportunity for, for hosting these games is that, as Tricia mentioned, twenty ten was fantastic in so many ways. But there are also things that we would like to see and do better. Um, and there's a chance for us to, to go back and to look and I, I think this is part of what today. Um, we can start a conversation with this group today, but also continue that conversation and to hear what are the things that didn't. Uh, work for your communities, what were some of the challenges you saw, what were some of the opportunities you'd like to build on? Um, and to really hear about what this could mean and how we can uh work together to maximize this for the region overall, because we really do believe that there's some incredible opportunities. Um, if we go to the next slide, this is uh again similar, but just this is the ma- major non-competition venue, so I won't, uh, I won't go through. Through this as well, but um I will just say one thing, we are contemplating in this, we will look to, to identify. How can communities across the province, across the region really capitalize? And I know there must. With a, a number of different communities that maybe aren't hosting events on this call. Um, is, it's a conversation that will continue with the partners is to say, how can we make sure that we? Leverage these games for all communities? How can we ensure that? That Olympic and Paralympic feel is felt across the region and that benefits accrue to communities across the region. And that's really what this engagement phase is all about. Is hearing those ideas, hearing those um, those concepts and, and building together. So we look forward to, to this conversation today and further conversation down the road. Um, if we jump to the next slide. Um, very quickly, um, we, the sport is obviously a foundation of the Olympic and Paralympic Games. But culture and, and education are other pillars of the Olympic movement. And so lots of. Work and thought has been given to a culture program that really can bring this vision to life. Um, that can highlight um, highlight indigenous culture, indigenous learnings and, and really unlock. Um, a variety of different opportunities within the culture space. And some of the ideas that you see on this slide where the, where our. Came from a conversation with the cultural chiefs of the four host nations and provide a framework and some ideas for how this can move forward. Um, and how we can look at years in advance of education programs and cultural programs that really come to the forefront in an indigenous-led bid. We go to the next slide. Um, just on, on environment and on uh sustainability, the twenty thirty will be the first schemes that require. Uh, that are required to be carbon negative, climate positive. We often will get that mixed up. They must be climate positive. Um, and so they must leave a lasting legacy, positive legacy for the environment. And again, this opens up opportunities to pull in. Learnings and, and for, for those, for us as partners to the four host nations. Um, the, you, we've been taught and we've been had, there's been an education process for us to talk about the seven generations principles, looking back seven generations. To decision that were made and for learnings and looking forward and contemplating seven generations into the future. And how do the decisions we make today? How do the initiatives we put in place today? How will they positively impact seven generations into the future? Um, and so this becomes the foundation of the sustainability of the environmental program for these games. Were required to be climate positive and it opens up opportunities to, to bring partners together to talk about what that can look like and to leave the world in a better place following these games in the region. And if we go to the next slide. Um, impact and legacy broadly is being contemplated. Um, across a number of different pillars and I won't go through each of these right now, but this is a very important starting point for any project is. How can this games positively impact the communities and surrounding region and the country overall? And this is a framework, um, that the pillars are a framework the federal government has built in their major sport events framework. Social inclusion, accessibility, economic prosperity, environmental stewardship in action, community resilience and affordability, sport participation in development and cultural enrichment. And ultimately, all of these areas can be impacted positively by having a games. And what we're looking to do is be intentional about those areas of impacts. And so. A lot of work has happened with the partners to date about what this could mean. How could a games in, influence and impact and leave lasting positive legacies for communities in these areas? And again, as we move into this engagement phase, that's really the basis for a lot of the conversations we're looking to have with partners. Um, moving forward is to talk about what this could mean for their communities and for them um individually. So we jump to the next slide. I will pass over to Laura to talk about that engagement process in more, in more detail.
Thanks, Andrew, and I'll, I'll try to be quick. Um, so the power of the invitation of the nations to invite in uh the partners uh into this process is now extending to the public. Uh, the nation leadership has indicated with an indigenous-led process, how important it is to have that dialogue with community. And never before have we seen this level of engagement with the public. Uh, with community in this phase, this early on. So again, kind of reaching this unprecedented work to have this. A public engagement phase. It's just commenced as of June this month with the announcement of the hosting concept in mid-June. So it's only, we're only a couple of weeks in. Um, but we do want to hear from community and from the public. So provide that additional context. Identify those, those concerns and also what kind of legacies communities want to see left behind uh with these games. So um as we enter into this public engagement process, it, it manifests in different ways. We've had an open house in Whistler. This past weekend, uh the pop-ups at the Dragon Boat Festival. Um, we do plan to have a. Pop-ups at Pemberton Farmers Market, Squamish Farmers Market, so that we can connect with individuals, have those conversations. Uh, get feedback on our vision boards. And we also have a community engagement platform with our project website. So our website. Uh, which is gamesengagement.ca uh offers the opportunity for people to register their email to stay up to date with the project. To take our community engagement survey as well as to share any twenty ten uh memories or stories on our site as well. So we've just embarked on the engagement process. We look forward to continuing to connect with community. And, and the public and, and hear what they have to say. Uh, we began in uh with the assembly partners and hearing from the nations and their communities and now taking this broader. So. Again, under the values of community, respect and inclusivity, guided by an indigenous-led process to have as much dialogue as possible. So if we go to the next slide, it just features our, our uh both English and French um project website. So we just encourage all of you when you have a moment to, to check out that site. Please share the link with your, your networks um so that we ha- uh can hear from as many people as possible. And we look forward to coming to your communities again. Uh, when we have those in our schedule. But I think we're turning back to either Tony or Andrew or Tricia for some closing remarks.
Uh, back, back to Tricia if you want to close anything.
Thanks.
Um, thanks, everyone. And I, I think I'll turn to Tony. Um, but uh, thank you, everyone, again for your time and I'll let uh Tony close up. But um, but really looking uh forward to hearing from you. And as I say, uh, we're in a um, an envi- or a, a. Position of having hosted the games and as I said. I think we got a lot of things right, but not everything right. So we have this incredible opportunity to sort of build on. You know, our investments uh, uh from twenty ten to extend the legacy um for future generations. So looking forward to hearing from you and Tony.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, um, thank you for your time today. And, and also when we talk about the power of an invitation in our community, it is about everyone. And when we talk about reconciliation in these games, it really is about all people from all cultures and. And just sharing those teachings with one another. So I wanted to hold my hands up to all of you and, and thank you all for today. Koichka.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Um, every time I hear this presentation, I learn something new. So um, I think that will continue. This is. This is great. And this engagement, this level of engagement so early on is uh really, really important and, and um. Clearly very important to everybody in the room. So that, that is excellent. Thank you very much. I'll open it. Uh, questions? Um, I'll go to Director Virch Jones for question. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Chair Ford. Thank you for your presentation and I admire your. Your energy and your plans and your enthusiasm. This is very exciting. Where I live is kind of surrounded by the, the Northern Statlium Territories. So. When I see Sun Peaks, I, first of all, I think that's a very good idea because you have much better chances of winter over there. Um, but you will have to figure out the traveling between. The Whistler Venue and Sun Peaks. And I don't know how far along you are there, but. There's about a hundred and eighty kilometers of winding two-lane. Roads, mountainous, no services, no cell, some single-lane bridges. And it comes right through Lilwet and on over to Cash Creek and beyond. That's about four to five hours. I'm. I'm wondering about how people would be moved and hoping that you're going to engage with. The Northern Statlium and give us something beyond just a lot of traffic coming through, through the community at the time. Um. And I really appreciate how you're re- reusing some of the venues that have been used before and. And all of the, the wonderful principles that you're working from. So thank you. And I just have that concern and consideration to pass on to you. Kuksham.
Thank, thank you for that. And um, that's certainly something that. Um, we considered when we looked initially, if you'd been follow, if you've been following this. We looked all over the province because the idea was let's spread the games out all over the province, but we also realized that that wasn't. Very environmentally uh sound um in terms of uh, you know, trying to be uh a sustainable a, a bit as possible. But you're right. Um, uh, one of, one of our um feasibility members was very much involved in the Cypress. Um, uh, helicoptering in of snow and um we, we realized that we couldn't do that to him again. But also, um, I know twenty can talk about the process in terms of the engagement with the, the nations around uh Sun Peaks as well. But the road and the transportation um is obviously something that um, that we have to plan for, but. There wouldn't be a lot of coming and going between because there'll be an athletes village there. Um, and, and there will be accommodation for spectators there. So we very much envision that. Uh, there would always be a lot of transport back and forth. But I, I, I maybe I'll pass it twenty first and then Andrew might have something to add on that.
Yeah, thank you for that question. And, and the four uh host nations, Lilwet, Musquim, Squamish and Saloitas. Have been practicing the protocol with the, the nations in the Sun Peaks area and the Tekemilts area. So. That's continued to move forward in a good way. Um, and so. And also seeking their guidance on things as well. And we talked about the Statlium, you know, with the um, with the Lilwet and the Mount Currie. Uh, uh, and there, it's also important in particularly, um, when we led up to twenty ten. If there are going to be places where we go, we make sure that we, we engage with the appropriate nations and seek their guidance on things as well. And that's. That's really the underpinning of, of the whole um process that we're in right now. But thank you for bringing it up. And certainly the nations are very, um. Very uh grounded in protocols as well. So, and also seeking that guidance. So thank you very much.
Maybe just to, to add very quickly, just to reinforce Trish's point, I think currently contemplated, we didn't, we wouldn't anticipate that there would be a significant amount of traffic going between. Uh, Sun Peaks and Whistler. There, there, we anticipate it would be really three self-contained clusters. Um, with relatively limited, uh, I mean, the transport would typically happen between the two uh clusters outside Vancouver and, and Vancouver. Um, but it's, I think, as we, we look through our detailed planning, we would be able to look at to, to modeling and to say what. Which group of people, of what constituents may be going back and forth and ensure that uh, that's planned for.
Great. Thank you. Director Rainbow, questions?
I just wanted to say thank you very much for the presentation. I, I find the whole concept really exciting. And, and I just wondered if you knew that the, one of the venues, the Whistler Olympic Park is actually within. The uh, the SLRDA. So we are more of a partner rather than just listening to a presentation. Thank you.
Uh, any other questions from anybody on screen? Any of the directors who are zooming in today? Seeing none, I'll say thank you to everybody who's been a part of this uh so far and um for every one of you for joining us today at our. Uh, this, oh, go ahead, Director Stoner. Do you have a question?
Yeah, sorry. Uh, just reflecting on some of the things I heard and thank you so much for all of you being here today and providing the presentation. Um, I did hear somebody say that they were going to do pop-ups at the Squamish Farmers Market, which is encouraging. And I'm just curious if we have a sense. Of timeline on that. Um, I know that uh, our community in Squamish. Uh, um, has really mixed feelings about the legacy of the twenty ten Olympics on our community. And so. Um, appreciate the early engagement uh and curious how we can get more of our folks involved in that conversation.
Yes, thanks, Jenna. We, we do have it slated. We don't have a, a date set yet. We're, we're just focused on the, the June delivery and um. Building out our July calendar, but the Squamish Farmers Market and Pemberton Farmers Markets are on our radar to be spotted in.
Yeah, and Jenna, thank you. Uh, and just the, the last comment on that, you know, working with the Skahotmish, with our Okamel, with our nation too, the, the good work that's been happening for a number. Of years, you know, uh, around um the relationship, I think is very positive. And I think. The ways that you would see also being involved, that's what we're looking for also is how could, how do you see yourself involved in this further? And I think that's also part of this engagement process. And I think that's also part of this engagement process, but also drawing upon that relationship with our Skahomish, with our people that, uh, that you're in the area with as well. And, and moving that forward. So thank you.
Great. I see a hand from Director Elliott. Go ahead.
Um, thank you for the presentation. I've heard this a few times now. It's very inspiring. Um, I think just building on what Director Stoner said is that I think the engagement in Squamish. Um, in the valley there, obviously I know the nation is doing the engagement with, uh, with their members. But I think it's more than farmers market visits. I think our chamber and tourism board and our council. Uh, would like the opportunity to sit down, uh, many, many volunteers supported the 2010 games. And most of the legacy of Callahan is the hard work of the volunteers that still live and maintain some of the legacy park in, in, uh. In the Callahan. So I think our community would, would love a deeper chance to engage, uh, and participate in an indigenous-led process. Because it's a learning opportunity for them. Um, and I think just, uh, uh, talking to people at the farmers market won't, um. I think engage our community at a level where they're capable of doing that, uh, and learning more through this process. So, uh, we'd be happy to host you at our council table, but, but also I think our community would love to host a conversation as well with Skahomish, Okamelk. And, and figure out how we, how we learn, uh, the experience of, of the valley from the 2010. Uh, and turn it into a positive force, uh, for a 2030 bid.
Absolutely. That is so doable. And thank you, thank you for that. We can absolutely make a, um, a more dedicated workshop. We had a, had a couple this week in Whistler. I know we had a, a, a couple of representatives from your council. Um, attend those sessions this week and we can absolutely make those happen with the, a Squamish and Pemberton and regional-based focus. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And Director Richmond?
Thanks. I wasn't sure this was the occasion, but, uh, I feel like it is now. So I just want to, first of all, thank you for the presentation. I think there's some, uh, amazing goals and ambitions for these games that, that you're proposing and, and that I fully support. Um, I would say similar to the comments from Squamish, here in Pemberton, there was a lot of excitement around 2010. Uh, and ultimately there was, uh, no legacy left behind. And we're, you know, 25 minutes down the road from Whistler. There was no real legacy left behind here in our community. And there was a feeling of exclusion, uh, once, you know, leading up to the, the last months, leading up to the games and, and during the games. Whatever excitement was generated was generated throughout the, by the community. Um, so similar comments, uh, I, I think there's mixed feelings here in my community in terms of. Um, the impacts of 2010 and the legacy and, and what 2030 could mean. I think there's some really exciting principles. So I, I'm hopeful that we'll see that sort of engagement here in Pemberton as well. And I look forward to it. Thank you.
Could I just respond to that? Uh, for me, this is really important to hear because we want to be better. And like I said, um, I think the fact that we hosted a, what is considered to be a pretty successful games on the outside. It's really important to know that where it wasn't successful and to work on it. So thank you for these comments and, and I look forward to, to engagement further. When I went to the chamber, the tourism boards, council and so on, be happy to do that. So let's make it better. Um, because it is an exciting concept, but it obviously wasn't, didn't work in lots of areas for 2010. So let, let's, let's figure out what we can do.
Hey, thank you. Um, and again, thank you everyone for being here today. Uh, we will wrap it up at this point. And, um, say goodbye to all of you for now and we'll see you again, uh, in our communities and, and around the region, uh, for further engagement. Thank you.
Thank you.
You.
Bye.
Yep, we're gonna call a five, do you want five? Five-minute recess. Great. Thank you. Um, can we just do a roll call of Jenna, Karen and Mike? Great. Thank you for being here. Thank you. Put your hand down, Mike. We didn't steal Elizabeth, if that's what you're worried about.
She already likes us way better.
I'm sure she does.
That's all what she told me just now.
Karen? Are you back? Not yet. That's okay. Okay, so we are now going back to number four. We are closing this committee of the whole. Um. So can I have someone move that we go into close? Director Virch Jones, second to by Director Stoner. Is there anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Director Rainbow there?